Greetings and welcome again to our fourth session on Paul's letter to the Ephesians. Today we'll be looking at chapter three in its entirety and going over some of the theology and looking at each part of the text. And so let's open with a word of prayer. Heavenly Father, we thank you for bringing us together virtually to study your text, to study your word, and to see the grace of Christ flow through it. We ask that you bless this study and bless all who are watching it. In your son's name we pray. Amen. Alright, so with chapter three, it's kind of a two-point structure and you can see that on the sheet. One through thirteen is kind of the first part and then fourteen through twenty-one. And to a degree, verse one kind of belongs, um, one, yeah. Verse one belongs with verses fourteen to twenty-one. And that's because Paul has somewhat of a squirrel moment. And by that, I mean, he takes somewhat of a tangent in the middle of his paragraph. So when we start with chap- or when we start with verse one and once we hit verse two, Paul pivots away from his prayer to sort of have this moment of exposition and information and discussion on the topic. And then when we jump back to fourteen, he jumps back into the prayer that he introduced in verse one. So he starts talking for a moment, then pivots, then comes back to it in fourteen. And sort of, there's a lot of debate as to why he has this moment of pivot? Why doesn't he just, you know, stay focused? Is it important? Is it a distraction? Why does Paul do what he's doing? There's not a great answer. I could give you the book answer. But we just want to point that out, that we sort of see this moment. And you see, if you look at the text, the ESV text here has a long dash after Gentiles. And so it's meant to sort of designate that, hey, the thought kind of diverges from where it was. But you don't get that dash to kind of figure out where it picks back up. Because instead, you have a subheading at verse fourteen. Alright, let's look at the text for chapter three. For this reason, I, Paul, a prisoner for Christ Jesus, on behalf of you Gentiles, assuming that you have heard of the stewardship of God's grace that was given to me for you, how the mystery was made known to me by revelation, as I have written briefly. When you read this, you can perceive my insight into the mystery of Christ, which was not main known to the sons of men in other generations, as it has now been revealed to his holy apostles and prophets by the Spirit. This mystery is that the Gentiles are fellow heirs, members of the same body, and partakers of the promise in Christ Jesus through the gospel. Of this gospel, I was made a minister according to the gift of God's grace, which was given me by the working of his power. To me, though I am the very least of all the saints, this grace was given to preach to the Gentiles the unsearchable riches of Christ and to bring to light for everyone what is the plan of the mystery hidden for ages in God who created all things, so that through the church, the manifold wisdom of God might be, might now be made known to the rulers and authorities in the heavenly places. This was according to the eternal purpose that he has realized in Christ Jesus our Lord, in whom we have boldness and access with confidence through our faith in him. So I ask you not to lose your heart, not to lose heart over what I am suffering for you, which is your glory. And we'll stop there for now. So as I was mentioning, we, well, let's look to the next verse for a minute. Verse fourteen starts, "For this reason." So that's the same way that Paul starts chapter three, verse one, "For this reason, I, Paul, a prisoner." And so he is grounding this in what came before, which is the gospel of chapter two. And so he's sort of laid out this idea of chapter two, looking at, you know, looking at something like two twenty-one. "In whom the whole structure being joined together grows into a holy temple in the Lord; in him you are also being built together into dwelling place for God by the Spirit. For this reason, I, Paul." So you have to remember that gar word, right? That pirate word that points us back to what came before. And this is what Paul is doing here. He's using that gar word for, for what? For the thing that came before, the fact that we're being built together into a dwelling place for God by the Spirit, I, Paul, a prisoner, on behalf of you Gentiles, squirrel. He'll get back to it. "For this reason, I bow my knees before." So he's getting ready to introduce a prayer in response to the divine mystery revealed in chapter two. Alright, so let's look at the question on the page. How did Paul receive his task as apostle? Who does he primarily work with? Okay, so we know that Paul received his task as an apostle through Jesus Christ. So we know the story from Acts. Saul of Tarsus is going to the road to Damascus. He's going to probably persecute and maybe kill the Christians there. Along the way, Jesus sort of appears to him, stops him, blinds him. He has to go to the nearest city. And then he is called to be an apostle of Jesus Christ. And so we know that story and more than likely, the Ephesians know that story. And so the task is given to him not by his own power and he's not given to the task by men, but by God. And so he is pointing to this, his divine task to be an apostle of Christ. Well, who does he primarily work with? He has confessed that he works with Gentiles. So he sees his ministry as serving the Gentiles. Which of course is interesting because it's not like the other apostles aren't working with Gentiles. We have the moment with Peter. And Peter has his weak moment, not just in the gospels, but in the book of Acts. Or in Paul's letters, he mentions how he had to rebuke Peter because he wasn't eating with the Gentiles. He was eating with the Jews because he, of course, was used to being a Jew and so he understands Jewish customs and he sort of wants to sit with his friends to the disgrace of the Gentiles. And so Paul calls him out on that. And so Paul's working with Gentiles, as is Peter, as is Apollo, as is Matthew and everybody else. So it's not just Paul who's preaching to Gentiles, but Paul sees it as his task to sign a kind of go after that specific group. So second question, what gives Paul the authority to preach? Well, that's, I mean, that's an interesting question. So, well, it's an interesting question for Paul, but it's an interesting question in general. What gives someone the authority to preach? So here we have, the answer here is of course, his calling from God to preach. In the same way, we see that in the Old Testament. The prophets who are called to speak on God's behalf are called directly by God. He has a direct, or theologically, we use the word, an immediate call. So an immediate call is someone who has, God show up, tell them, you need to go speak, and they go and speak. Sort of immediate, direct, go now and say this. So that's kind of how we see Paul's call. But when we think about it now, and what gives someone the right to preach, we don't often see those immediate calls. And by that, I mean, Jesus did not show up to me at night and tell me, "Go to seminary and be a pastor and then you'll go and preach the gospel." That's not how it works. Instead, we, you're, as a pastor, you are not considered called to preach until you are called to a congregation. Now, will they allow us to preach? Because you don't let your first sermon ever written go to your congregation, because it would be terrible. And so instead, you know, they farm you out to the other churches in the area and they make those members suffer, knowing that they have another pastor to hear every once in a while. But you don't consider, as a, as a pastor, you don't consider your authority to preach given to you until you've received your divine call, which happens on call day, which is coming up for a bunch of seminarians soon. And so until you've received a call from the church, then you have the authority to preach. So I can't, until I was called to serve the church, I couldn't claim authority to preach. I could be under another's authority to preach. And so what that means is, every time I had to preach a sermon before I was called, it needed to be reviewed. Someone else had to look at it. Someone who was called and ordained had to look at it first. Make sure that it was, in a sense, kosher and place it under their own authority. So if someone wants to preach, let's say, we get a vicar. The vicar's sermons have to be reviewed by me and then they fall under my authority as pastor, even though he's going to preach it. So he's going to proclaim the message, but he's preaching not from his own authority, but from my authority that I have approved his words. And so that happened, that happens for everybody's vicarage. The supervising pastor or the bishop has to sort of look over all the sermons and knows what you're doing and what you're talking about. And that's just good supervision. And we see this also in the Augsburg Confession. I think it's seventeen? AC seventeen, I think it's AC seventeen, on the idea of the retevocatus, the right of calling, or properly called. It's kind of the article on properly called. I'll, let's see, it should be, I'll put it on the screen, but uh, maybe. And so then we'll look at that, because my book of Concord is somewhere else. So thinking about retevocatus and being properly called, that's sort of a good order. So you can't just let anybody preach. So why can't Agent preach? Or why can't Austin preach? Or why can't Olivia preach? Or why can't Christian preach? You know, why can't these kids preach? Why can't you, well, Eugene probably could preach. Why can't, or why doesn't, you know, Tim or Carl or any, you know, all these people are a congregation, why don't they preach? And the answer is because they have not been called. And so if a person is called to serve, then they can preach or called to proclaim. And the church does that. That's part of the call committee. The call committee is saying, we are going to authorize this person to lead, to administer, and to preach. And so that's sort of how all that kind of plays together in, in the modern world. And none of that is done in the same way that's done with Paul. So there was, I'll tell you a story because, you know, what, what are we doing? You know, why not? So there was a guy at seminary who thought he had an immediate call, like Paul did. He thought, or he believed that Jesus came to him in a dream and told him to go attend Concordia Seminary in St. Louis and, and to go through the MDiv program. He felt he had an immediate call. In the end, he didn't make it. He did not finish his coursework. He didn't end up in the parish. He never received a call from the church. And that's sort of how we decided, we, as if I'm involved. But the church, the Lutheran church has decided, and the Catholic church has decided that it's the church that calls the ministers. It calls those who are to preach. It's not, you don't have, you can't take it upon yourself to preach. And we see that in, you know, in Jeremiah, for example. I think it's in Jeremiah. I'd probably should double check. But the idea that God says to the prophet, "They ran without me telling them to run." So these false prophets are running with their own messages that God did not give them, claiming that God called them to speak. And so we, as a church, for the sake of good order, say that those who are called to preach must be called by the church. And so how does the church do it? Well, the church designates the seminaries to sort of certify and call rightly those men into the office. And so there's things like being certified theologically and then being certified as a graduate and then being called to a congregation. So all sort of those three things happen to a seminarian before they're allowed to be called, a called and ordained pastor. So that also, I mean, there's lots of, there's lots of things that kind of go and branch off from that. You know, is someone who doesn't have a current congregation a called and ordained pastor? So for example, in the, if, if I were to resign my call from one congregation and maybe retire, you know, let's say I retired or resigned my call or you guys fired me, then I'm in this sort of weird gray area where I'm, I was called and ordained. Now I'm not called, but I'm still ordained. And so it's sort of this weird thing. Now, if you want to further on this topic, because I don't know, maybe you want to. What do you do when you don't have a pastor and you can't get one? Well, you might say, well, we let the elders preach. You know, what if I get sick Saturday night and I can't preach? I got a sore throat, you know, my nose is running, I can't really speak, I lost my voice. You know, what happens on Sunday morning then? Well, part of the idea of the Board of Elders is that the Board of Elders are those whom the church has chosen or called to serve in cases of emergency for the pastor. So this is why, you know, Carl or Tim or Eugene could all preach my sermon Sunday morning if I was sick. Or preach another pastor's sermon if one, if a pastor wasn't available. They've been designated by the local congregation to serve in that capacity. So that's, so that's, well, the sort of wrinkles are things that flow out of the idea of the divine call and how we as the Lutheran Church Missouri Synod sort of deal with all those sort of facets. None of that, of course, was on the sheet, so I apologize to Agent who is taking great notes right now. He has probably, I'm sure you may have zoned out for a moment, but we're going to go back to the questions. So let's, let's go back to question number three on the page. So question three on the page. What is the mystery that Paul proclaims? Now, the text answer that we're going to look at in verse six, you, you would think it'd be, it's crystal clear, right? Verse six says, "This mystery is," it's going to answer the question, "this mystery is that the Gentiles are fellow heirs, members of the same body, and partakers of the promise in Christ Jesus through the gospel." See, that should be an easy answer, right? Except it's not really the answer. So when Paul talks about the mystery, so let's look at verse four. "When you read this, you can perceive my insight into the mystery of Christ, which was not main known to the sons of men in other generations, as it has now been revealed to his holy apostles and prophets by the Spirit." So looking at four, five, and six, that you, at first, at first reading, you're going to think, oh, the mystery that Paul's talking about is the role of the Gentiles in the New Testament church. That a bunch of Germans and Irish and Slovaks and English and Sudanese and Nigerian and Brazilian and all these people are going to be in the church. No, I wasn't going to list off a hundred and ninety-two or ninety-five or two hundred, I don't know how many countries are in the world right now. But I'm not going to list all of them. But it's not just the Jewish people. It's, it's everybody. Now, is that a mystery that wasn't known by all mankind? Yeah, it kind of was known, that the nations would come to the Lord. So we see this in the Old Testament prophets, Isaiah, Jeremiah, Daniel, Ezekiel. This idea of proclaiming to the nations, not just to the Jews or the Israelites, but to the nations, the coming of God, or the salvation of God. So the mystery isn't necess- the mystery not known from the beginning of time or known by any man is not that Gentiles will be brought into the church. That was known, that the nations would come before the Lord and worship him. What wasn't known, that is now revealed to the apostles and prophets, is Christ. So the answer to the question three, what is the mystery that Paul proclaims? The answer is Christ. But Christ has many mysteries. So the metaphor kind of you could use is the facets of a gem. You have one gem that is Jesus Christ, but there are multiple facets. There's multiple sides to who Jesus Christ is. This is why I don't have to preach the same sermon every Sunday. I pick a facet and I go for it. Then the next week, I pick a different facet and sort of work my way, metaphorically, work my way around to try and cover all the different facets of Christ through working through the texts. And so that we don't hear the same words over and over again, but instead hear a different facet, a different way of looking at the same treasure that is Jesus Christ. And so we see this in, oh, well, I got a book right here. So this book, for example, The Atonement, Its Meaning and Significance by Leon Morris. Leon Morris is one of my favorite theologians to read that's not a Lutheran. He, this book talks about, each chapter is sort of dedicated to a different facet of the atonement. So you can talk about it as covenant, you can talk about it as sacrifice, you can talk about it as the Passover. So there's all sorts of different things, justification, propitiation, reconciliation. See, I'm just looking through the book like this. And so there's, there's eight or nine different facets of just the atonement. So a facet has facets, which just sort of helps spiral around. So just looking at the one idea of atonement, you can get, you know, six or seven different facets just from that one concept of Christ dying on the cross for the forgiveness of sins. Well, what does that mean? Well, you can look at it this way, or you can look at it this way, or this way. So the idea here is that, the point here is not to shrink down the mystery of Christ to the, to the in-bringing of the Gentile peoples into the church. So that's not what the wholeness of Christ or the mystery of Christ is. It's one aspect that is very important to the current church, to the Ephesian church. They need to know that the Gentiles are brought in, just like everybody else, just like the Jews are brought in. And so that's important, that's an important facet. It's an important facet for us, because we're all Gentiles. So we should know that too, why we're brought in to the gospel. Why might, this is question four, why might the church in Ephesus lose heart over Paul's imprisonment? So this is verse thirteen. "So I ask you not to lose heart over what I am suffering for you, which is your glory." So this is sort of the last idea of this distraction moment in verses two through, two through thirteen. Now, why might the church in Ephesus lose heart over Paul's imprisonment? Well, for the same reason that you might lose heart if I was imprisoned. If I was imprisoned for something, I don't know. I make something up in your own mind, I guess. Leave a comment down below as to what my crime might be that I would be arrested for. No, please don't do that. Christian, don't do it. So the idea here is, if your teacher, if the person whom you model your faith after is a criminal, you're going to lose some social status. You're going to lose some honor and respect. And Paul says, "Treat it in the opposite." Treat the fact that I'm suffering not as a reason to lose heart, but a reason to be strengthened. And so this is the reversal of suffering. So we also see that in the Epistle, or the first reading from Acts. So this, this session is tied with the second Sunday of Easter. And so in Acts, chapter five, Peter and the rest of the disciples are preaching in the temple and they get arrested. And the council of Pharisees sort of have this, have this meeting and they try and figure out what we're going to do with these people. And they end up in the end beating the disciples and send, casting them out. Don't, don't preach anymore about Jesus. We're going to beat you up and throw you out. And so the disciples respond with gladness that they were able to suffer for the sake of the name of Christ. And so there is this, there's a reversal on suffering when it comes to the Christian faith. That when we suffer persecution, when we suffer hardship for the sake of the name, it's always important to kind of put that phrase, lots of us suffer hardship, but we don't always suffer hardship because of Christ. We suffer hardship because of bad decisions. We suffer hardship because of a bad economy. We suffer hardship because of a plague. Those are all hardships, but those aren't hardships for the sake of the name of Christ. We suffer hardship through the name of Christ when we are openly persecuted for believing in Jesus Christ as Savior. And that's what Paul, or Peter, Paul, and the disciples are all dealing with. And, and from a normal perspective, from a cultural perspective, from a worldly perspective, those who are arrested, those who are beaten by authorities are not people to model yourself after. Your life should not be modeled after a criminal. That's just sort of normal rule of thumb. Yet, Paul is saying, yes, I'm arrested, yes, I'm in prison, yes, I'm suffering, but that's not a reason to lose heart in the gospel that I proclaim to you. It's a reason instead to be strengthened and encouraged. So, so that's sort of a change in the way that people look at things. Now, let's look at fourteen through twenty-one. Chapter three, verses fourteen to twenty-one. Chapter three, verses fourteen to twenty-one. "For this reason, I bow my knees before the Father, from whom every family in heaven on earth is named, that according to the riches of his glory he may grant you to be strengthened with power through his Spirit in your inner being, so that Christ may dwell in your hearts through faith, that you, being rooted and grounded in love, may have strength to comprehend with all the saints what is the breadth and length and height and depth, and to know the love of Christ that surpasses knowledge, that you may be filled with all the fullness of God. Now to him who is able to do far more abundantly than all that we ask or think, according to the power at work within us, to him be glory in the church and in Christ Jesus throughout all generations, forever and ever. Amen." So first question for this section, what does Paul mean by every family named? Well, there's some argument about this phrase, which sort of, there's lots of, lots of choices here. But in broad strokes, what this phrase is talking about is God is Father of all. So, so I'll start with the question. Who gets to name people? Or who gets to name things? And the answer is, parents get to name children. Children are going to pick their name typically. Unless you're going to go through the process of changing someone's name. But it's the parents, when the child is born, who gets to pick the name of the child. They have authority over the child to name them. In the same way, if you're going to start a small company or small business and you want to name it something, then you have to have, the person who has authority over the company is the one who's going to decide what the name of it is. You know, random Joe on the streets not going to be able to name someone else's company if he doesn't like it. I don't get to just rename Starbucks to Starbend's, whatever, just because I feel like it. So those who have power over the thing get to name it. And so the, the idea that's first and foremost is God is Father over all nations because he names them. And we see this sort of in the Garden of Eden as well. Adam names the creatures. It's an act of having authority over the earth, dominion, as the text would use. So God is, is the Father over all the earth. He is the Creator over all creation. Says both in heaven and on earth, that's encompassing all things. He is over everything and has power over everything. He is the Father. And so then we're looking at the next question, what is Paul's? Um, and so then we're looking at the next question, what is Paul's prayer? So what is Paul's prayer? Well, there's, there's kind of three parts to Paul's prayer. Um, the first part is that according to the riches of his glory. He may grant you to be strengthened with power through his spirit in your inner being. So the first part, first petition, so if you're gonna, if you're taking notes. Uh, there's gonna be three main petitions, the first one is um, being strengthened with power. He wants Christians and those who are hearing these words uh to be strengthened with the power of his Holy Spirit. Uh, for what reason? So verse seventeen, so that Christ may dwell in your hearts through faith. That you, being rooted and grounded in love, may have strength to comprehend with all the saints. Uh, what is the breadth and length and height and depth? So, so that, back in seventeen, so that Christ may dwell in your hearts through faith. Um, so you wanna be strengthened, so Christ will dwell in your hearts through faith. Uh, and when that happens, uh, you'll be rooted and grounded in love and have strength to comprehend. Uh, strength to comprehend what the mysteries of Christ, the mysteries of who Jesus is and his love uh for us. Um, and when you consider the mysteries, you recognize that there is a, a breadth and a length and a height and a depth. So it's, it's a large mystery, um, that cannot fully be comprehended by us. Uh, and to know the love of Christ that surpasses knowledge. So to be strengthened. Um, to have uh faith dwell in your hearts, and then to know the love of Christ. Um, so those are the three things, um, that you may be filled with all the fullness of God. Um, so those things, those three things lead to a fullness or a filling up. Um, so as we begin to contemplate and begin to understand more about God and 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 his son. Uh, we then are filled up. And there is a, so something to note here. Um, because it's worth noting, um, this prayer is inherently Trinitarian. We see the Father in the beginning, we see the power of the Spirit, and we see the Son. So all three persons of the Trinity are in this prayer. Um, and so it sort of makes sense, um, to sort of end with this doxology that we're gonna find in twenty twenty-one. Uh, question here, um, the second deluxe question. What does Paul mean to know that which surpasses knowledge? Okay, so this is a question about nineteen, which the verse seems contradictory. How can you know that which is beyond knowledge? That doesn't make any sense. Um, so in verse nineteen, the prayer, and to know the love of Christ that surpasses knowledge. That you may be filled with all the fullness of God. Um, and so if you picked up on that sort of sounding sort of weird that, how do you know the thing you can't know? Um, the answer is, you'll never know all of it. You will never have a mastery over the mystery of Jesus Christ. But that doesn't mean you can't understand some. And so this is, I mean, this, in some ways, we recognize this in our own lives and we talk to people. There are some who know very little, who understand very little and require a great deal of correction. Um, and a great deal of patience when talking about spiritual matters. Um, and I'm sure you can think of, think of people. Um, and so they make mistakes when talking about Christ. Or talk about the mystery of God, they don't seem to know a lot, but they know something. Um, and then there are people who seem to know a a regular amount, they seem to know, you know, um. In a sense, a normal person's amount about the mystery of Christ. Uh, they can understand that Christ died on the cross for them and was raised from the dead and uh forgives us our sins. And you know, understands the small catechism and and you know, it's, it's the people who come to church and read the word and listen to sermons. And come to Bible study and and they know stuff. Um, and then there are those who who seem to know a lot. Um, who have, who have spent a lot of time in the mysteries of of God. Or the mystery of Christ, there's only one mystery, that's the whole point of this thing. Um, and so, you know, there, the knowledge. The prayer here for Paul is that all of us continue to grow in that knowledge. Because when we grow in the knowledge, we continue to be filled by the love of Christ, and we continue to be. I wouldn't say useful, but helpful to one another. Um, you know, by by knowing something that another person doesn't. Or having a better understanding of some component of theology or of the mystery of Christ, cuz you've thought about it, you've contemplated, you've experienced something. Uh, can be of great comfort to someone who maybe doesn't share that same experience. Um, this is, um, I think about the, I think it's Second Corinthians. Um, where Paul talks about, uh, you comfort people with by, by, through your own affliction, you're able to comfort others. Um, in their afflictions. And so by having experienced things or having contemplated or having knowing things. Um, that others don't, you can bring that comfort to them. Um, so, and um, you know, it's not like I consider myself the top, the top rung of this. Um, uh, there are, there are far more people that exceed me in understanding the mysteries of Christ. Um, and so, uh, and it's other mysteries, you know, it it's, and it's not really a competition. Um, but it's a recognition that each person sort of brings something else or something different to the table. Um, due to what they've experienced and how Christ has sort of led them through those experiences. Uh, last question on the page, how does Paul end this chapter? He ends it with what's called a doxology, um, and it's called a doxology because of the Greek word doxa, um, which means praise. So there's sort of this last line of praise, um, or I say praise, it means glory. Um, so doxa is what is the Greek word for glory, we see him use it in verse twenty-one, to him be glory. Uh, so it's called a doxology, it's a last line of, it usually comes at the end of prayers, and it's a line of 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 praise. Um, so we, there's a singing of the doxology, which is um, praise to to the triune God. Um, so twenty to twenty-one, now to him who is able to do far more abundantly than all we ask or think. Uh, according to the power and work within us, to him be glory in the church and in Christ Jesus through all all generations forever and ever, amen. Uh, so technically speaking, he ends this chapter with the word amen, um, but he ends it with a a fuller doxology. Um, and so that's sort of how, one, it's how you can tell it's a prayer, he ends with a doxology. You can also tell, um, that this is a a time of praise, cuz he recognized that. Even with all the things that Paul has asked for, he recognizes that God can do so much more than what he simply asked for here. Um, he knows that the spirit can work, he knows that the mysteries of Christ can be revealed. Um, and he knows that it can be more than what Paul is doing as an apostle, as someone who's inspired by the Holy Spirit. Uh, God, God can do much more. Um, and I'm sure in in some ways, Paul didn't know that this letter, these words would be. Um, the basis for so much growth in the faith for two thousand years. Um, so God has done more abundantly than what we can ask or think, uh, and he continues to do that for us. Uh, according to the power at work within us, the power at work within us is the Holy Spirit, uh, that is the power that's at work. Uh, and so to him, to God be glory in the church and in Christ Jesus, so. Uh, throughout all generations. And that's our prayer now as well, that uh we as the church today continue to bring. Prayer and praise and thanksgiving to Christ for all of the work that he's done for us. Uh, and so let's close with the word of prayer. Uh, most holy triune God, you have taught us today about uh spiritual strength. You've taught us about growing in the mystery of Christ, and you've taught us about uh being. Um, being a light to reveal the mysteries and the facets uh of of Christ to others. And we ask that you continue to send your Holy Spirit upon us so that we may be that light, that we may uh continue to reveal the mystery that is. Uh, Jesus Christ, our Lord and Savior, uh to all the world and throughout all generations. Amen.